Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Shaez McKeer, the CEO of the Half Moon Bay Coastside Chamber of Commerce and Business Bureau. I welcome you all to the Half Moon Bay City Council Candidates Forum. This is sponsored by the Half Moon Bay Coastside Chamber of Commerce and Business Bureau and Pacific Coast TV. And the League of Women Voters, and Jackie Jacober will be your moderator tonight, and she will explain the rules of the evening to you. I also want to thank Half Moon Bay Coffee Company for supplying us. We have decaf. We have three pots of decaf and one of caffeinated. I figured, most of the people in this room are probably over 40, they shouldn't be. Okay, welcome, and thank you all for coming. Let's get started.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to offer my welcome as well, and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters, and I do have first some little things to begin with. I'm going to ask you to turn off your cellphones, and at least make them silent, because the candidates will be speaking, and we don't want any candidate interrupted during that time. And we also say no literature, one of our rules is no literature or other campaign material, campaign buttons, and that kind of thing in the room. So I would ask you to observe that first. And next, I'd like to thank the Half Moon Bay Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring the forum tonight. The League is a nonpartisan political organization, and I would like to say we have both men and women, in spite of our name. And our purpose is to promote active and informed participation in government. So we really appreciate the efforts of groups like the Chamber for putting on things like this, because it's the only way we can cover all the races that we have in our county and in our jurisdiction. We can't do each one all by ourselves. So first off, the purpose of the Candidates Forum is to provide an opportunity for the candidates to be heard at one time, and to be questioned by you, the audience. We hope that by bringing the candidates and the voters together face to face, voters will be better informed, and they'll make wise decisions on Election Day. So I thank you for taking the time to come out tonight and learn more about these candidates. During this forum, you will hear from the candidates for the Half Moon Bay City Council, and there are seven candidates for three seats. The term of office is four years. Now, in the interest of time and fairness to the candidates, I'm going to ask you to hold your applause until the end of the forum, and we'll thank all the candidates with our applause at that time. And another reason for this is that the purpose of the event is to provide the nonpartisan setting to help undecided voters hear all the candidates, and help them choose. It's not for the supporters or opponents of any particular candidate in the audience to demonstrate their own personal preferences. So we ask you to observe that. Now, the candidates are seated in the order in which they drew for opening statements, but in alphabetical order, they're Alan Alafano, David Eblovy, Rick Kowalski, Deborah Penrose, Don Presto, Harvey Rarback, and Deborah Reddick. So they've been set the ground rules, but I'll let you know what they are. Each candidate's going to have two minutes for an opening statement, and then during the question period, each candidate will have one minute to answer. And all candidates will have an opportunity to answer every question. So when you're phrasing your questions, try to make them general, so that they can be answered by all the candidates. And then for the closing statements, each candidate will have two minutes for the closing statement, sentence, but we do ask you to stop when you see the stop sign. Thank you. We have ushers in the audience. Questions will be in writing on cards, and the ushers have cards for you to write down your questions. You can raise your hand, and somebody will bring you a paper and pencil if you need it. I'm going to ask you, for my sake, to please write legibly, and to keep your questions brief. Questions of a personal nature and personal elective will be out of order, and I will not ask those questions. And again, I say, please ask questions that can be answered by all the candidates. So our ushers here are Margie Gator up here, and Don Jacober is that way. So raise your hand when you're ready to have them. Usher picked up your question as well, and they will be brought up to me. All questions come to the moderator, and I will try to sort the questions by subject, and try to cover a variety of subjects. We probably usually don't have time to ask all the questions, and I may rephrase and combine questions at times, so that we can cover a variety of topics. So if you don't hear your question exactly, we'll try to do the best we can to cover everything. So the candidates have drawn lots to determine the order in which they will speak. So each candidate has two minutes for the opening statement. And our first candidate is Deborah Penrose. You have two minutes to go ahead and speak.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Deborah Penrose, and I'm running as a reform candidate for city council. I'm running because our current council is not listening to you. As a practicing physician for 33 years, I've developed an excellent sense of hearing. I listen. Unless all of our citizens are heard, we can't prosper as a town. And I'll say that again, unless all of our citizens are heard, we cannot prosper. Our neighbors' concerns have got to be the primary driving force behind all council decisions. We need to stop the polarization in our community. We need to stop the expensive outsourcing by those that have no vested interest in our town, who only get to make money off of our citizens. We pay them, not the council. We pay them. We need to use the amazing local talent that we have here on the coast, and it is amazing. Too often, the current council has already decided issues prior to bringing them before the public. This has happened over and over and over again. They currently take great pride in the fact that they're getting the Perseidus Bridge taken care of. It took the citizens outcry before that happened. I bring a voice of reason, sound judgment, and I hope to have you as behind me as city council member. Thank you.
Thank you. I ask you to hold your applause, please. Thank you. And that was Deborah Penrose. Next is Harvey Rarback.
It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Harvey Rarback, and I'm running for city council, because I want to change the direction that the council has been taking us the last five years. When I had a chance to come here to the coast 17 years ago, to see if I could afford to live here, my wife and I walked down to Kelly Beach, and the minute I smelled that salt air, I said, "This is the place." I love this whole city. I love the environment. I love the local coastal feeling that we get, and I want to preserve it. I think it's really important. You probably have seen my logo, the green tree. That tree is a particular tree. It's the cypress tree that used to grace Highway 92 and entrance to our town. It was a very welcoming sight. My wife liked it so much, she took the picture, and the logo was made from that picture. A developer then cut that tree down, and the same developer built our two-story real estate agency across the street. I went down to the planning commission to see if I could change the zoning, so that we could have a true gateway that was more welcoming, maybe a visitor's center, or a small, low-impact park. And of course, I was blown off. So it's very important to me, because of the general plan update that's happening, that we make sure that our coastal ambience is maintained. So I pledge to you that I will try to keep the coast the nice, beautiful way that we're all used to, and that we will not make it worse. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was Harvey Rarback. Don Rarback, I'm sorry. And next is David Eblovy. Do you have two minutes?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is David Eblovy. For those of you who watched last week, still in the throes of the cold, so I beg your patience if my voice dies. First, I want to say good evening to my two sons, Declan and Juneau, who are watching from home, and really wanted to be here, but didn't seem to understand that going to bed at 10 o'clock wasn't going to work for mom. Abraham Lincoln famously said, "We here bear the responsibility and hold the power." I think if you follow on to that, it was to make our world a better place, or perhaps to prevail in the case of the Civil War. My goal in life is to leave this town, whether as a councilperson or as a human being, and my planet, whether as a citizen or a human being, in a better place than I found it, for my children, and for the kids of all of us that will follow. We hold the power, and we bear the responsibility. And I hope you will join me in exercising that power and responsibility to achieve that goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. And next is Don Prestos.
Thank you, and thank you all for coming. My name is Don Prestos. I've been a resident in Half Moon Bay for about 40 years. I've been a teacher at the high school of, of all things, government and economics for about 15 years, and started a business in 1989, an environmental consulting business, which still exists. I've spoken on the other side of this table many times in front of the city council about issues concerning the city. And one of them, one big issue was, how can we capitalize on the tourists coming here, which they want to come anyway? And we're short of money, because we're always in lawsuits and paying legal fees. There was a stretch there where we were paying about a million dollars a year in legal fees, and now it's only about a third. And I'm happy to see that we're in the black, not the red. And one reason why I'm running is, I look at all the things that we have here, and the things that they have over the hill, and we are lacking the amenities. And I just want this community to have a better quality of life. I want the quality of life, not just for now. We talk about roads and libraries, and those kinds of things, but for the future. We can't look short-term. We want to make sure that future generations will benefit from our actions today and tomorrow. And that's what I want to work to make sure happens over the next few years. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Next is, I believe, where are we? Rick Kowalski, sorry.
It's Rick Kowalski.
Kowalski, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Rick Kowalski, and I currently sit on the Half Moon Bay City Council, and I was your mayor in 2013. I've been a resident for 15 years. I moved to Half Moon Bay 15 years ago, because it's a beautiful, hopeful place. It's a place where I wanted to raise my daughter. At that time, a new Boys and Girls Club was planned, a new library was planned, a new school was planned. The makeup of the city council then was very different. The new Boys and Girls Club was stopped. The new library was never built. The new school didn't happen, and the city finances were inside-out. Half Moon Bay's direction was wrong. I decided five years ago to run for city council, and I would appreciate the votes I got, and it was an honor to serve on the council. In my first term, we were able to turn things around. We turned financial insolvency to financial stability. We implemented the first major maintenance projects in years. We were not able to fix a pothole five years ago. Yet, at the end of my term, we paved 17 miles of streets and repaired them. We reestablished close working relationships with the community, with the county, and with the state, and all the projects going on today are a result of collaborations with all those entities. Our finances are back on track. Our library is back on track. And the Boys and Girls Club, they're using this building. I'm running for reelection, because I want to finish what I started. I will build long-term financial stability for our community. I will complete the important projects, like the library, the skate park, and renovating Mac Dutra Park. And I will further develop collaborative relationships, so we have strong working relationships with our partners in the county and at the state level. And most importantly, I will work within our community to build a greater sense of community, especially with our Latino community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kowalski. And next is Deborah Reddick.
My vision. I believe we need to focus first on repair and upkeep of our streets, bridges, parks, trails, and open spaces, and keep on top of the trash problem. There is a trash problem. A clean, well-maintained city will add to the enjoyment of residents and visitors alike, increase property values, and make our town attractive to businesses. We need well-crafted policies and careful planning that preserve our small-town character, our Main Street, and scenic coastal open spaces, and accommodate some new housing, and create a thriving local economy. Our problems of land use and traffic are linked. We must address them together. Road widening might accommodate more cars, but will really reduce congestion when we support alternatives to car trips and properly locate development. We need to prioritize new residential development within or close to existing office and retail centers and highway corridors. We need a mix of housing types for young adults, families, and seniors. To reduce out-of-town trips, we need to create local jobs, provide local live-work housing, and supportive technology, and encourage car sharing with additional park-and-ride locations and van pooling. To reduce in-town congestion, we should work with the school district to reintroduce school busing, provide shuttle service for residents and visitors, and make our town more bike and pedestrian-friendly. We should support local independent businesses, oppose big-box retail stores, and make sure any new development fully mitigates its traffic impacts through supportive alternative transportation. I support vibrant, diverse, and connected neighborhoods with easy access to parks, trails, and community gardens, dog-walking areas, and traffic calming as needed. Neighborhood planning will encourage neighbors to meet, share, and build something together. I would appreciate your vote on November 4th.
Thank you. And finally, our opening statement from Alan Alafano.
Thank you. I first want to thank the Chamber, the League of Women Voters, and you all for making tonight happen. My name is Alan Alafano, and my wife and I have lived in Half Moon Bay for almost 45 years. I beat you by a couple, Don. Both of my sons and our three grandkids live in Half Moon Bay. When I got elected to the city council in 2009, Half Moon Bay was not in very good shape. But through a lot of hard work, we've gotten our town back on its feet. We paid off the Beechwood bonds 20 years early. We saved the city $25 million through $13 million in insurance settlements we negotiated, and $12 million in interest we saved on the bonds. We've acquired Smithfield playing fields, 29 acres, added much-needed senior housing, as you've seen down on Main Street. We rebuilt our city staff, and we're on target to build a new library without any new taxes. I'm endorsed by all five county supervisors, the sheriff, the San Mateo Daily Journal, and the Half Moon Bay Review, plus more I don't have time to list. Why these endorsements? I have to think because I've provided positive leadership during my last five years on the council. My reason for running tonight is to keep our city on the road to improvement. I don't want to see our city fall back into the hands of LCP, League for Coastal Protection. These are the folks who caused Half Moon Bay all the problems we finally fixed. You have three candidates running on a slate endorsed by the same LCP people, including Mike Ferrara, who is considered by most to be the prime architect of the Beechwood disaster. Please vote for candidates like myself, who have a clear track record of working to improve Half Moon Bay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alafano. Now it's time for the candidates to answer your questions. And as I said, there's never time to ask all the questions that are up here, and that's sort of why I had trouble here keeping track, because there were so many questions coming up and trying to get them sorted. But I'm going to ask questions, if there's a lot of questions on one topic, try to make sure that we cover those topics first, and then, you know, we'll get to as many as we can. So each candidate's going to have one minute of sample, some of the kinds of questions that have come up. And so let's start with Deborah Reddick.
I think I addressed this in my opening vision statement. I think it's really important for us to realize that where and how we build is very closely linked to our traffic problems. Our neighborhoods are strung along Highway 1. People are accessing the highway in many different locations. Our neighbors in the coast side are sharing the road, and we share the road with visitors. We really, if we were to widen Highway 1, we might accommodate more cars, but that necessarily is going to reduce congestion. So I think we have to get people out of their cars, and we have to locate new development close to the existing major intersections and retail centers, so people can access services, and van pools, and car share very close to where they live. I think that's the only way we're really going to improve our quality of life. Widening Highway 1 will, I think, destroy our community, make it more difficult to get around, especially if you're going in an east-west direction and accessing the beach. Thank you. Thank you. Next, Mr. Prestos.
Yes. The two major areas where we have problems is Surfers Beach and the Pumpkin Farms on 92. Neither one, neither area, we have jurisdiction. But there's deal to do something about that traffic. So I would propose, if I get on the council, to start a dialogue, both with Caltrans and with the San Mateo County, to solve those problems. Maybe Surfers Beach, find a walkway or a trail underneath Highway 1, so pedestrians can get to and from the beach. Some way to get people moving from the farms as well. But all of that has to be in conjunction with other agencies who have the jurisdiction, but I'm willing to try to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Mr. Alafano, the traffic question.
There's three things we can do that really can have a major impact or a major improvement to traffic. You all know how we all get stuck on 92, not just in October, but it's almost year-round. You know where the pinch points are. The city needs to work with the county, with Caltrans, to find a solution to improve 92, to eliminate those pinch points, so people trying to go back and forth between Highway 1, excuse me, and Highway 280 aren't hung up at the areas where we currently are. Secondly, we need a plan to improve Highway 1 from Main Street North. And you all see that in the evenings, how bad that gets. We're currently working on a plan with Caltrans to make major improvements from Main Street North. And thirdly, we need to work with the school districts, the school district, to eliminate all of the cars in the morning and the afternoon, taking one child to and from school. My recommendation would be, let's work, have the school work with Samtrans, utilize their buses to keep those cars off the highway.
Thank you, Mr. Alafano. Let's see. Harvey Rarback.
When I first moved here, I complained to my boss about how bad the traffic was, and he said, "Thank your lucky stars. If there was a six-lane highway on Highway 92, then nobody would want to live here. It would be a mess." I seriously think that traffic's a problem, and we should address it in most of the ways that have just been mentioned. But the reality is that it's just going to be impossible to have a totally smooth-flowing road on 92 or Highway 1. We need to get as many cars off the road as possible, as Debbie Reddick said. That's a start. We probably would need to have some right-turn lanes on the two Pumpkin Farms on 92. That would eliminate some of the problems. Definitely, school buses, that's clearly something useful on the weekdays. So that's...
Right-hand turn lanes. All of these things can be used, none of these things can be used. What we have to find out is, what do our citizens think the answer is? If we involve our citizenry, then they're going to be much more likely to develop car pools, to develop shuttle buses to get to 92. We own very little.
Thank you. And let's see, next, Mr. Eblovy.
If I were to be on the council, one of the first priorities that I would address would be working with the school district and reaching out to the school district to establish busing for individuals going to both Cunha and the high school. It is a huge priority. Each school bus, not Samtrans bus, which has alternate duties, each school bus represents between 60 and 100 cars, potentially, that would not be on the highway. It's something we could do immediately. It's something that is our problem. Yes, the school district is responsible, or was responsible, for providing busing, and they pulled it, it was their choice, but we're the ones being affected by it. It's something we could do in the short term and quickly. And in the long term, I'm going to bend your brain a little bit. In Europe, they have aerial tramways going across huge mountain ranges. Weekend traffic, we could have an aerial tramway that's carrying 150 people at a clip from Crystal Springs all the way here, and a round trip that takes about 15 minutes. Would it work? I have no idea. But it would have almost no footprint, no environmental impact, and it's worth looking at. It beats that, it beats sitting in traffic on 92, coming across in such a manner.
Thank you. And finally, on the traffic question, Mr. Kowalski.
Thank you. I want to talk about practical, reasonable options for traffic. Traffic is a big issue. We conducted a lot of discussions leading up to this election, and one of the primary issues that we hear about is traffic. In fact, today I received a drawing, it's currently on my Facebook page, it's from an eight-year-old kid from our community, showing his feeling about traffic, and little cars, pppp, all stuck. We cannot handle this alone, and nor should we. It is all tied together in a connected chain with the county. We need to work with the county to develop a traffic mitigation plan. In fact, I have a meeting on October 22nd with Supervisor Don Horsley, to connect with him about the county's plan for traffic mitigation. If we try to fix traffic only in Half Moon Bay, it will cause congestion outside Half Moon Bay. If entities try and fix traffic outside Half Moon Bay without working with Half Moon Bay, it will create congestion here. It's all interconnected. Some of the good ideas...
What we have to find out is, what do our citizens think the answer is? If we involve our citizenry, then they're going to be much more likely to develop car pools, to develop shuttle buses to get Ninety-two. We own very little.
Thank you. And let's see, next, Mr. Eblovy.
If I were to be on the council, one of the first priorities that I would address would be working with the school district and reaching out to the school district to establish busing for individuals going to both Cunha and the high school. It is a huge priority. Each school bus, not Sam Trans bus, which has alternate duties, each school bus represents between sixty and a hundred cars, potentially, that would not be on the highway. It's something we could do immediately. It's something that is our problem. Yes, the school district is responsible or was responsible for providing busing, and they pulled it, it was their choice, but we're the ones being affected by it. It's something we could do in the short term and quickly. And in the long term, I'm going to bend your brain a little bit. In Europe, they have aerial tramways going across huge mountain ranges. Weekend traffic, we could have an aerial tramway that's carrying a hundred-and-fifty people at a clip from Crystal Springs all the way here, and a round trip that takes about fifteen minutes. Would it work? I have no idea, but it would have almost no footprint, no environmental impact, and it's worth looking at. It beats that, it beats sitting in traffic on Ninety-two, coming across in such a manner.
Thank you. And finally, on the traffic question, Mr. Kowalczek.
Thank you. I want to talk about practical, reasonable options for traffic. Traffic is a big issue. We conducted a lot of discussions leading up to this election, and one of the primary issues we hear about is traffic. In fact, today I received a drawing, it's currently on my Facebook page, it's from an eight-year-old kid from our community, showing his feeling about traffic and the cars, p-p-p, all stuck. We cannot handle this alone, and nor should we. It is all tied together in a connected chain with the county. We need to work with the county to develop a traffic mitigation plan. In fact, I have a meeting on October twenty-second with Supervisor Don Horsley to connect with him about the county's plan for traffic mitigation. If we try to fix traffic only in Half Moon Bay, it will cause congestion outside Half Moon Bay. If entities try and fix traffic outside Half Moon Bay without working with Half Moon Bay, it will create congestion here. It's all interconnected. Some of the good ideas that I've heard tonight that I agree with are side-access roads, right-turn lanes, and allowing Sam Trans to provide some busing for our schools. They're already driving buses on the coast, we can take advantage of that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next little pile of questions I have here have to do with youth in the community. And it says, "What kind of resources are you prepared to offer the youth in the community? Have you done, what have you done to support the youth?" And it also, there's some questions about supporting the Boys and Girls Club, which I think these two are, you know, related as far as the youth goes. So I'm going to try to combine those so we can cover more. And Mr. Eblovy, could you start with the question about resources? What would you offer youth in the community?
Well, the question was asked, "What have I done?" We can start with the Ocean View Playground, which was slated for destruction, and remained in service for six months while the Mothers Club and Hope Atmore and Kristen O'Brien secured funding, much to my amazement, to build a new one. I did that on my own, and on my own initiative. The council was actually going to just tear it down and destroy it that Friday morning. This is a really generic question, and I don't even know in one minute it makes sense to even try to answer it. I mean, we want to take care of our kids. I have two small children, so obviously I'm incentivized to work on our children in the community. So I think I'm just going to stop there because there's not going to be any better answer for me at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Mr. Kowalczek, can you talk about the services for youth in the community, or what you may have done to support them?
Absolutely. So first of all, nobody was tearing down any park, period. Let me be clear about that. So when I came in tonight, I met EJ and Mike, two young men working over here with the Boys and Girls Club. They're working with kids, they have a tutoring center, and I'm a full supporter of the Boys and Girls Club. In fact, I supported the vote to make this facility available to the Boys and Girls Club. Furthermore, I helped to form the partnership with the school district and with the Boys and Girls Club to build our new skate park, which is going to be adjacent to this facility. I'm also a very big proponent of the new library, which will serve the youth of our community in huge ways. And it was also, just about the Boys and Girls Club, you know, a big supporter, participated in the Building the Dreams Dinner, where they raised over three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for new Boys and Girls Club, and I'm a big supporter, and I will certainly do all I can to help them implement that. Thank you.
Encouraged CalFire, who's our contractor, to make visits to the, all the schools, to educate them about fire safety and what they need to do to protect themselves. What else have I done? Nothing escapes me at the moment.
That's a lot of, a lot of information, but I am trying to combine questions and cover as many as we can. Mr. Alafano, a question on youth in the community, services and resources.
Yes, I'll repeat some of what Mr. Kowalczek said. We really worked hard with the Boys and Girls Club, who years ago was, was kind of led astray in what they were trying to accomplish. The city really didn't treat them very well. We've worked very hard, and across the street, they're going to build a brand-new dual gym in collaboration with the school district. And when the old skate park has to go away, we're contributing the property next door here to the new skate park. It'll be a permanent skate park. Where you're sitting right now, Ted Adcock, the Boys and Girls use it. We've remodeled next door. Take a walk over there and take a look. Smith Fields, twenty-nine acres. We have lots of youth activities that happen there every weekend, and a dog park. And the biggest one, going to be our crown jewel someday, is the new library. And it's not just about books, it's about all the kids' activities, keeping kids active in the afternoon, keeping them out of trouble, and keeping them out of gangs.
Thank you. Next, Deborah Riddick.
I think this is a really good question. I think we have to be really careful that, you know, because of the cost of housing here, that we don't become an older community. We know our community is aging. I think we need services for young people and services that are attractive to families because we want a diverse community. As a, previously as a council member years ago, this is twenty years ago now, I was instrumental in having the city create, the city's first-ever Parks and Recreation Master Plan that aimed to reduce the, the per capita acreage for parkland. I negotiated a development agreement with Wavecrest Partners. That plan is gone now because the land has been purchased and is an open space, but negotiated with the owner of the Smith Fields and persuaded them to put, to sell these Smith Fields to the city. The city did not own, it was leasing the space. Consequently, that agreement went kaput, but negotiated hard for it, succeeded.
Thank you. And let's see, Mr. Prestos.
Yes, I spoke out years ago for the Boys and Girls Club, and newspaper called me a community activist. I don't know how that came about, but I spoke out back then. Being a teacher, I coached the golf team, and when the kids had breaks in summertime and they wanted to play and keep their game up and help them, I would. They had a club, we had a club at the school, a political club. We joined Junior Statesman of America. We went to Sacramento and had alleys and sung with thousands of kids from all around California. I did all of that, and I did a whole bunch of other work. Lastly, I've worked with the Half Moon Bay Beautification Committee for twenty-five years plus. I'm not sure what year, what year it'll be this year, and I know that that money's some of it goes to youth activities as well. So that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Penrose.
Well, the first thing I'd do would be try to figure out how we could build a gym. I was at the Hispanic Community Center when they presented the general plan to the Hispanic community, and one of the biggest drives from the people there was, "Let's get a gym for our kids." I think that would be a wonderful thing. If we can't get a movie theater here, which I'd love to have, let's get a gym. Let's use our, the little bit of open space that we've got as pocket parks where kids can congregate and be together without adult supervision. Those are my two, two major ideas. The third thing I'd do would be, I'd be working with the school districts to figure out, how can the schools help us with after-school programs for the kids?
Thank you. Another issue that I have several questions on is connecting with the Latino community and helping them to be seen and heard in Half Moon Bay. Have you engaged with the Latino community, or, you know, what could you do to help the Latino community really be a part of the Half Moon Bay community? So let's see, let's start with Mr. Alafano.
Yes, one of the things that, and I'm going to give credit where credit's due, Council Member Kowalczek's been doing a lot of outreach to Latino community. I think it was about two or three weeks ago, he put an event on here and brought in food and brought in quite a few people to try and gain some, you know, a buy-in from the people in our community, explaining what we do and what, how we can involve them more. And then after that, I'm taking some of his time here, after that, he set up a meeting on the general plan, specifically with people that reached out to the Latino community to talk about what the general plan is, and asked them to fill out surveys and get what their thoughts are. And I think one of the things Rick's looking to do down the road is to have some kind of a permanent standing committee that would allow us to find out what the concerns are, and to have this group be able to work between us and the community.
Thank you. Let's see, Mr. Eblovy.
Thank you. I'm sorry, the Latino community's going to get short shrift here, but I'm done with lying and BS. March eighteenth, two thousand and eleven, Mr. Kowalczek seconded the motion to destroy the Main Street, or I'm sorry, the Ocean View Park playground structure, which had been determined to be unmaintainable or unsafe, that Friday morning. My wife told me about it, I reached out to her, I'm sorry, I reached out to the city manager and the playground inspector that night. Laura Snyderman gave me until the following Friday to come up with a plan to keep the playground structure in service. I spent my own money, with my own resources, met with the playground inspector, found out what needed to be fixed, had it fixed by the following Friday, and Larry Carnahan, the inspector, and I met that Saturday morning. It was inspected, it passed, and the park remained in service until the following, I believe, August or September. That's the truth. Thank you.
Thank you. And then the question is on engagement with the Latino community. We do have some other questions on, I believe, on the parks here, which maybe you'll have a chance to address that. Mr. Kowalczek, engaging the Latino community.
Thank you. There was a tragedy in our community where a young girl was killed, and it really shocked us. It shocked all of us, but it absolutely shocked me. I realized that there wasn't simply a minor separation, there was disenfranchisement. There was a part of our community who felt like they didn't belong, they didn't feel unity, and that was unacceptable to me. I met a wonderful person, Belinda Hernandez Ariaga, and she and I co-founded the Half Moon Bay Latino Advisory Council. We are advocating for unity in the community, not something special, something together. We have a slogan, a butcher in Spanish, it is "La Raza Unidos por una Comunidad." The people united for one community. So we did hold a fiesta, and we did get out, try to get voter registration. We did answer questions and have them translated in Spanish. And we did have a general plan advisory meeting at Main Street Park in Spanish. We got a tremendous amount of input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. Next one, Deborah Penrose, would you answer that? Speak to that question.
Yeah, I don't think it's an easy question to answer. I think Mr. Kowalczek's group that he's organized with Belinda is a wonderful first start. But when I went to the general plan meeting in the Hispanic community, I was surprised to see about twenty-five, thirty people there. It's not the entire community, and when I walked into the Mexican Latinos who were working in, did they know about the general plan meeting? None of them had any idea that the general plan meeting was going on. So I'm hoping that in January, when, when they go back to the community, that we can get a greater number of Latinos there.
Thank you. Mr. Prestos.
I talk to the Hispanic community almost every day. Three or four Hispanics sign my papers to one of the city councils. I haven't talked to any organized group. When I was a teacher, I was pretty popular with the Hispanic kids and their parents when I met them. And Monday, this question was asked at the meeting here, and that morning, I was speaking with four Hispanic women, and they asked me about the library. And I said, "Do I support it?" And I said, "Yes." And I, so I thought I'd ask them questions, and they convinced me of all the value the new library would have. To them, their parents and grandparents and children and cousins and stuff, and they were passionate about it. So I think that I talk to the Hispanic community on a daily basis, and I have a good rapport with all. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Mr. Robach.
The population of the Hispanic community in Half Moon Bay is over thirty percent. We are not doing enough to support them. I think some of the ideas that Debbie Riddick has about more affordable housing, especially on Main Street where the access to transit is better, something that we need to explore. We definitely need to have an increase in housing stock that's available to Hispanic people as well as the rest of the lower, lower-income people. Our bike trails need work. A lot of Latinos rely on bicycles to get around, and it's difficult. There's not enough public transit that we need to get together with Sam Trans to have more frequent buses so that they are made convenient to get around town. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Riddick.
I think the city's made a great start. I think it's overdue, but I think they've made a great start. One thing I would do differently is this. The city spends approximately fifty thousand dollars a year on a public relations consultant to produce flyers and communicate with the public and put our, you know, the best face on the city council and city staff, get it out to the community. Received one of those flyers recently. I would rather see that money used to perhaps translate the city council meetings, have documents translated into Spanish and available online and in paper form, easily accessible and expensively for our Hispanic community. I think that's a much better priority than a public relations firm, which I call the spin doctors. So that's what I would do, spend it on the Hispanic community and inviting them in and making ourselves a more inclusive community.
Thank you. That was, I got to ask, so I think we'll go to that one next. Do you have ideas to create more affordable housing? And somebody specifically asks about housing for low-income senior citizens, and I think there was another one regarding the seniors' problems with affordable housing. Let's see, so what ideas would you have to create more affordable housing? Mr. Kowalczek.
The city of Half Moon Bay owns land. We own the properties, we call the Cabrio Properties, the Beechwood property of Highway One. This would be a great location for senior housing and affordable housing, and that's, I think, a practical, reasonable use of that property. However, before we pursue developing this property, I think we need to have a citizens' advisory committee to make sure that the interests of the community are best served by developing on this land. But we have access to this property. We own it. We also, I also would support development of property, of properties along the Main Street corridor, along our downtown area, so people have less driving to do, so that the amenities are closer, within walking distance. I did have the opportunity to walk the Cabrio Properties with some developers and with some city staff to get their ideas, to understand the footprint of the wetlands there. I believe we can develop on these properties and protect the wetlands that are on that property. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Ms. Riddick, the question on affordable housing.
As a city council member in the past, I was instrumental in the city's creation of an inclusionary housing ordinance, so that when developments of a certain size came before the city, we had requirements about how many of those units had to be affordable to, you know, modern incomes and low incomes. And I think that was very successful. We had a committee that got together and formulated that. It was sixteen citizens from, for business in all walks of life. Going forward, I don't think we're going to build our way into affordable housing. Some people think, if you just build more, you know, prices will go down. I believe that it's a matter of political will, negotiating with nonprofit partners and business people to come up with financially feasible ways to create these developments. Not just, you know, and not a one-hundred-percent affordable developments, but, you know, a mix. But it requires political will and the willingness to negotiate. And I think, I agree with others and myself, who said we should be building these close to city services and transit. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Penrose.
Yes, I think two ideas that have been stated already are part of what my plan would be, and one of them is a citizens' task force. But the citizens' task force should be made up of people who are going to be living in moderate-income housing. That's number one. Number two, you don't put it out on Highway One, you put it downtown. You don't put it in a great big block of housing, you intersperse it so people aren't segregated from one another. You make cohousing available, you make shared housing available, you use the concept of tiny housing. There's clusters of housing, there are lots of ways to do it. There's clusters of housing, there are lots of ways to do it, but as Deborah Riddick said, you need the political will to do it. You have to be willing to spend the money on the people that are less fortunate than we are.
Thank you. Mr. Eblovy, the question of affordable housing.
Thank you. I think the first thing we have to recognize is that the current government in our city is not interested in affordable housing, and you can see this very clearly by looking at the current U.C. development. Thirty-two homes at Ocean View, it developed at this point. There is a statute in, or there's a part of our local coastal policy which requires if you're going to do a development like that, you have to build or provide affordable housing. Or, in this case, you can write a check to the city council and put it into the general fund for $2.5 million. So when they speak of political will, I think it's important that we recognize what is political will. Political will is if affordable housing is important to us and we tie it to the construction of high-value housing, then we need to hold their feet to the fire five years later, 10 years later, and actually require that the housing be built, and we don't let them write a check on a $60 million project, so it cuts down their margins by what, 5%, 3%? That's ridiculous. Thank you.
That there are simple solutions to some of the affordable housing issues, like shared housing that Deborah Penrose said, having in-law housing available, infill housing, these are straightforward solutions. There is land or places like above Shoreline Station, above the New Leaf Shopping Center, above Strawflower, which might work out as a location to build reasonably priced housing that's small but affordable. So I think we need to go in that direction.
Thank you. And Mr. Alafano.
The city has worked and will continue to work with Mid-Penn and other agencies to continue to build more senior affordable housing, like I've said, is right down Main Street, some beautiful facilities. But think about this, right now, we're in the midst of creating our new general plan. This is a perfect opportunity, if we care about affordable housing, to get involved and decide where does it go, how do we blend it into our community? And one of the ways we can do it is with higher-density housing, affordable home, and stay on the coast and not get chased away by the million-dollar houses.
Thank you. And finally, Don Prestos.
Yes. When we talk about affordable housing, and then the question was, it talked about affordable housing and senior housing, and I think two of them are two different animals, even though both of them have to be affordable. I would suggest we look, we have a general plan update coming up, we can look and see what inventory we have and anticipate the need for our senior housing. Population is getting older, so that may be something to have a joint with some of the other groups to build specific senior housing and multi-unit housing for younger people, like apartments and so on, for, so they, people that are just starting out can stay here instead of moving away. Again, though, we have to take an inventory of what we have and where we want to go, and that way we can prioritize it in the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Now, I've got some questions here on the Main Street Bridge. What should be done regarding...
Is what finally is some of the city council people are coming around to, which is to do a forensic analysis to find out what the bridge needs to stay safe in the future, and the people who do that analysis should not be tied to the existing consultants we've had, who've had a skin in the game to try to get money that doesn't really make any sense except for them. So we need to do straightforward analysis to find out how we can preserve the Main Street Bridge in the...
I heard a comment one of the other candidates made about a peer review. If that makes people feel more comfortable, I would certainly support that. And the Main Street Bridge Committee, which is open for applications right now, you can get an application on our website, consists of 10 members. Three members who own property on Main Street, two at large, one member with interest and knowledge of historic preservation, one from the Chamber of Commerce, one with knowledge and interest in environmental protection issues, another one in architect, civil engineering or construction, and one member from the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission. I think if we empower this committee to come up with the best possible plan for the Main Street Bridge Committee, I think we can put this to rest.
Thank you. Don Prestos.
Yes, what I would do is what we're doing, test the bridge, see what's wrong with it. The only two things that I would want about is, number one, if it can be repaired, that the cost of repairs don't approach the cost of replacing the bridge. Sometimes replacing and repairing may come up to be the same price. Probably not, but I would be aware of that. And the second thing is, it can't be a short-term fix. We're talking about industry, we're talking about bridges, so a fix for five or 10 years is not adequate. It has to be, when we talk about bridges, it has to be 50 years and beyond. And then whatever it is, if we can do that by repairing the bridge, I'm 100% for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Deborah Riddick, on the bridge.
I don't have much to add to what Harvey and Don Prestos said. I voted for Measure F. I worked hard on the campaign. I think we need to repair unless, you know, there's absolutely no way we can repair it to a useful life expectancy and at a reasonable cost. But yeah, I think we should do everything we can to fix it, unless we can't, and then I would support replacement if the facts demonstrate that that was necessary.
Thank you. Rick Kowalczek, on the bridge.
Thank you. So most people are aware that I supported Measure E to replace the Main Street Bridge because we had funding in hand, in hand for a new bridge, and I wanted to bring it up to safety standards. The citizens were very clear, they wanted to restore the bridge. I'm proud to say that, look, it's data. I'm a data guy and I'm flexible. The citizens were very clear, so I'm proud to say that I made the motion to adopt the citizens' initiative, and our policy, the policy of the city, is to restore the Main Street Bridge. We're currently recruiting a citizens' advisory committee so we can get input from our community about the best options to pursue going forward with the Main Street Bridge. We're currently recruiting an engineering firm to conduct testing so we can understand our range of viable options, and from there we will...
Responded with the citizen advisory committee only after the citizens stood up and said, absolutely not. Measure F, replace the bridge, we've got the money, why not replace it? What an outrageous thing. You do the studies first, you ask the citizens first, and then you come to a decision about what you're going to do. That's it.
Thank you. And David Eblovy.
Thank you. Councilman Kowalczek failed to mention, unfortunately, let's back up for a second. A couple of you are aware that I was involved in preserving the Main Street Bridge. I wrote the National Register nomination that the city then spent $5,000 fighting that was approved and enlisted the bridge. The citizens' initiative that Councilman Kowalczek is so proud of enacting into law was written by me. It was, I was the main proponent of the citizens' initiative. Thank you. And sincerely, thank you. It was two years too late, but it was a start. What we need to do is we need to fire URS. They're testing the bridge, but URS, the company that currently has a contract to replace the Main Street Bridge, is the company that's overseeing the process. What are we doing, folks? We were told it'll be people that are not connected to URS. Jerry Steinberg and I were at the meeting where URS led the meeting with the potential contractors that URS had invited to the meeting. I've had two of those contractors reach out to me personally because they're not getting the response from the city that they need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, there are several questions regarding, you know, making the community more livable, and it says, and we went into traffic before, and it's sort of related as well, but it says, we can't fix the traffic until our workforce can find jobs over here on this side, and is there anything you could do to make that happen? How would we, how would we, you know, build our community into a healthy and stronger community with more resources for people to work over here? Is there anything that the city council can do about that? Don Prestos, will you take that one first, please?
Well, I mean, unless we deal with Google's, they're in busing people up to San Francisco, we bus people down to wherever they work, I don't know. We're talking about market forces and, well, for better word, we are a bedroom community over here. There's not a lot of industry. We have agriculture and tourism and not much of anything else. So I'm kind of stumped, except for having better buses and encouraging carpooling. I'm not sure what else to say about that.
Thank you. That's a tough one. Deborah Penrose, do you have any ideas on jobs here?
Yes, I think the jobs here are tied in with traffic and with housing. You can't work on them separately. But there are a couple of things I would do. I would not increase the sales tax, I would not make it more difficult for small businesses to succeed in our town. I would encourage the development of moderate housing in our town. I would definitely encourage the use of shuttle busing in our town. I would use citywide free internet services in our town.
Thank you. Deborah Riddick.
I certainly would support live-work housing. I would also support taking a look at our technology services like high-speed internet and make sure that it's something that supports people working at home. I think a lot of, there's a lot of talent here that commutes over the hill that could benefit from not just live-work space but technology. What is it? And we need land that's zoned for it as well. We lost, the city council basically lost GoPro, which was an excellent company, the kind of, you know, green company that we would like to have in Half Moon Bay. We need to make sure there's land available and infrastructure that supports that. I think it's a community discussion about what kind of businesses we would want to support. I don't think we want anything too large, so we could definitely talk about this as part of our general plan update. Those are some of my ideas.
All right, thank you. Let's see, Rick Kowalsk, would you take that one?
I found GoPro, so good news. They outgrew our community. We were not able to keep GoPro. GoPro's a company, the startup formed in our community, grew fast, outgrew us. That's what happens when you get too big, when you become a big company, you have to go where there's space and technology and you have access to the resources you need for your company. They were the perfect fit for our community when there were five people and 60 people. They were not the perfect fit for our community when there's 600 people. That is not, we do not have the infrastructure for that. I would support more office space that would accommodate small companies, but I would reach out and work with incubators. Incubators are venture capital organizations and other companies that help small companies start and grow. Dorado Software, big company now, started here. Adwalla, they were here. They outgrew us. It's okay for our role to be the place where small, exciting companies come and grow, and when they've matured, they may have to go somewhere else. That's okay. We have an advantage for being here. We have a cost advantage, and we have just a beautiful place to have a business. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, where are we? Dave Eblovy, I'm sorry.
Rick, I think we're torturing her. Eblovy.
Eblovy, yeah, sorry.
The first thing I would do, and look for industries and infrastructure that would support companies and small businesses, Rick's right about one thing, 600-person companies are not going to work here. 20, 30-person companies are going to work here. We don't embrace the Latino community in our community here, and it's shameful. And the only way we're going to make use of this workforce is if we embrace them as part of our community, and it is a tremendous resource just waiting to be tapped. All we have to do is reach out and do it.
Thank you. Alan Alafano.
To understand the problem, it probably helps to have a business on Main Street, which our family does. We've been in operation for almost 15 years now, so we understand the issues of employment, but we have to keep things straight. We're not going to be Palo Alto or Fremont or San Francisco or Half Moon Bay, so our focus has to be a little bit different. And I agree with Mr. Kowalczek. I think we've talked with the chamber about focusing on the small startups, like he said, the incubators, five, 10, 15 people. If they really get to grow big and they need space for 500 people like GoPro, they're going to have to go over the hill, but when they're small, this is a great place for them to be. But we have a lot of great employers in town. Think about this, we have the Ritz, Ocean Shore, Sams, It's Italian, James Ford, the list goes on and on. These people are successful and they employ people, and if you're looking in town, there's help-wanted signs up. So we need to continue working with the chamber, figuring out where is it best for us to do business development.
Thank you. And finally, Harvey Raabach.
I, because I'm going last, have heard some very good ideas that I agree with. I don't want to repeat them, but I also agree that we need small business, we need low-impact incubators. I think Rick Kowalczek is on to something there. I think we need more affordable housing to keep people on the coast so that they don't leave. We need more transportation that's local to keep people in town. These are all things we need to do. I also agree that the Latino population is underserved and would be a wonderful resource if we reached out and got them in the workforce more. Migrant workers, sure. So these are all ideas that we need to increase our local workforce.
Thank you. Now we'll move to, I guess, out of the business and into preservation of open space. There are a couple of questions here. Citizens of Half Moon Bay have prioritized preservation of open space. If you are in the city council, what have you done to conserve open space? If you're not on the council, what steps do you think you might take or that should have been taken? And let's start with Deborah Penrose.
Yeah, I think one of the biggest problems we have with our open space, and it's tied in with the bridge issue. We don't care of our open space. We need to maintain it, and we need to encourage people to use it. I wouldn't build on it if I could avoid it. I don't know how to answer that question really, except that we need to keep it and we have to maintain it.
Thank you. Let's see, David Eblovy, I'm sorry, I'm getting dry here.
Thank you. I think the first thing we have to do as a council is stop representing an incredibly narrow band of incredibly wealthy developers and their supporters, if you will, of whom there are very few. I encourage you, Mr. Mutif actually made a post on Talk About a couple days ago with all of our campaign finance documents. I encourage you to take a look at the three gentlemen to my left here. They are supported almost exclusively by major developers, major developers, major developers, and incredibly wealthy people that don't live in Half Moon Bay but really like development. So the first thing we have to do is recognize that the council has to represent the community. The community has spoken overwhelmingly. The first six priorities on the general plan update are open space, we want open space, we want more trails, we want all this stuff, not a word of a housing development on the pedestrian property or 2,000 houses on the Wavecrest property. To you, the mass of you, it doesn't matter, it's not what you want. To the narrowness of the councils that sits today, it's exactly what they want. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd just like to remind the candidates, you know, when we ask the questions, I think most people want to know what you will do and, you know, not address what your other opponents have done or might do, but they're interested in what you would be in support or oppose. Mr. Kowalczek.
Thank you. I believe...
I believe we can protect our open space through policy, not by spending city dollars to buy property and turn it into open space. I think policy can achieve that. I know my fellow candidate, Deborah Riddick, advocates for spending city resources and city revenue to buy land and turn it to open space. I think that's a bad move. I want to spend our city resources on our new library, on our new parks. Growth is limited by Measure D at 1%. We're not going to grow more than that. In fact, we never get close. And so we can, through policy, maintain our open space. And, you know, it's important that people have access to open space, and I want to make sure we maintain that as well. It's not just if you go to a nice restaurant or go to the Ritz-Carlton that you should have access to the coast side and the ocean bluff tops, but we have beautiful open space and we need to make it accessible with our trails so that everybody who's part of our community, unified in our community, can take part and enjoy that. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Next, Harvey Warbach, the question of preservation of open space.
There's a reason the Sierra Club has endorsed me, and that's because I will fight to make sure that the direction that we seem to be heading is headed off at the pass. If you look at the so-called stakeholders that the city has interviewed, they consist almost exclusively of realtors, lawyers, developers. They don't represent what the majority of the citizens want, and they don't want the planned urban development areas built on. They don't want 70s-style housing developments. They want to preserve the ag land. They want to preserve the open space. They want to make this community, keep it as beautiful as it is now and not have it look like Monterey. So that's the direction we ought to go, and I hope to be able to enforce that.
Thank you. Let's see, next, Alan Alafano, could you take that?
Thank you. This is a very sensitive subject, and this is where the city got in trouble some years ago with Beechwood. You can't create open space by hindering property owners from developing. You have to walk a fine line from a legal standpoint. Our city is not in operation to go out and buy and preserve open space. We have other agencies that are responsible for that. Post, Coastside Land Trust, the state. There is a myriad of agencies we need to work with, but it has to be a balance in our community between open space and developed areas. The council, again, has to walk that fine line and not get us into trouble like we did years ago and almost bankrupted our city.
Thank you. Let's see. Don Prestos.
I like trees. I like grass. I like animals. I have no intention, if I'm elected, to take anything in the general plan that's open space and make it a mecca for multi-use housing. It's going to stay open space. And if we can have more open space in certain areas, yes, I'd like to see that. But I want to echo that there is, there are property rights that we have to work amongst. And for the record, I have no developable money on my financials. Please go check, because I was asked this question on Monday, and it's just a lie. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Deborah Riddick.
For the record, I work for the California Coastal Conservancy. I know all about open space and the tools needed to acquire open space. I also want to correct a lie just uttered by Mr. Kowalczek to my right that I have advocated spending city money to purchase open space. Not true. So what a lot of people don't understand is that much of the open space, especially on our west side, is not publicly owned. It is covered with paper subdivisions of antiquated lots that are postage stamp size that haven't been developed because the city has a zoning designation called Plan Unit Development, currently that protects open space in the sense that developers have to have a single plan to develop it, cluster the development, and leave the majority of it in open space. So currently, there are council members and others in the community that would like to eliminate that zoning and make it easy for those people to develop these tiny lots. I'm against that. I want to protect the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have, there are several questions just on maintenance of the community litter. Is, there's park maintenance, who's in charge, and what you could do about that. Could you offer your thoughts on addressing decay in park maintenance? And they also mentioned parking violations. But, you know, could you just generally give your thoughts on what might be done to improve the maintenance of the city's facilities and parks and whatever? Mr. Eblovy.
I'd take care of them.
Okay, all right, thank you. That's it. Thank you. Mr. Warbach, any specifics?
The city incumbents, city council incumbents are very proud of the fact that they finally turned the city around financially. Well, one of the ways they did that is by neglecting and deferring maintenance. Maintenance of the Main Street Bridge, maintenance of the Hernandez Bridge, maintenance of the trails, maintenance of the parks. It's a shame. It's not sexy to maintain your infrastructure, but in the long run, it's the only way that you can save money and keep the community vibrant and well-maintained.
Thank you. Alan Alafano.
If any of the candidates had come to our March 25 meeting this year, they would have seen us picking out $1.6 million of projects to go out and maintain and improve things in our community. Tuesday night, we approved, I think, about $20,000 to replace the benches on the trail that have deteriorated with brand-new plastic benches that are going to last for many years. The city has been working very hard, by the way, the total bottom-line number that we were offered was 16 million. We can only cover 1.6 million. We have a lot more things to do in our community. But you don't do things like this if you're not financially stable. That's what we've done with our community. That's what Measure J did to help us handle these projects, and Measure O will help us handle more projects. You don't handle projects with good intentions and words. You handle it with good financial planning and money.
Thank you. Let's see. Where are we? Don Prestos, please.
Yes. As far as the parks go and stuff, make sure that the trash receptacle's there so people can throw it in. I'm sure there is, but if there's not, make sure that it's there. At one time, we had about 10 employees in Public Works, and those are the people who take care of maintenance and cleaning the parks and so on. And I believe we're down to three, so maybe hiring a couple more now that things are getting better may help both with maintenance and keeping everything clean. Other than that, I think that's probably a step forward.
Deborah Penrose.
I would echo exactly what Mr. Prestos said. You hire employees, the city pays the employees, and the employee's responsibility is to keep our parks, to keep our coastal trails maintained and cleaned. Simple.
All right, thank you. And, let's see. Deborah Riddick.
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question, please?
It was on, the question, there were several questions on maintenance of parks and the streets and just fixing decay in park maintenance in the community. There was something on paving streets as well.
In favor of upkeep. I think I mentioned earlier that it makes it a nicer place to live. It's nicer for residents and visitors if we have well-kept trails, parks, roads. I think that's a good investment, and I think those are the kinds of basic activities that a city should perform. Otherwise, why incorporate? So I would rather see us spend some money doing those sorts of things and making us look good for everybody. And even businesses want to, you know, have offices in a place that have open space and well-kept infrastructure. So I would rather see the money spent there than on big-ticket marquee projects, at least for the near term until we get everything spruced up.
Okay, thank you. And finally, Rick Kowalczek on maintenance.
Thank you. So Public Works is our department that takes care of our parks. Aren't we fortunate that they do as good a job as they do with such limited resources? This whole panel is fortunate that we're now talking about having the ability to pay for more upkeep and maintenance. We didn't have the ability. When you're broke, you cannot fix all the things you want to fix, and you cannot repair all the things you want to repair. We're very fortunate to be in a position where we can do that. If we need to add staff, we may be able to look at that. So as one example, not a major project, but an example of maintaining our facilities, we have budgeted $110,000 for Ocean View Park, potentially to replace the restroom, to replace some apparatus and some equipment there, and do maintenance on that park. We are fortunate to be able to do that because we're in a better position. Another example, MacDucha Park. Through collaboration with the Beautification Committee, we are partnering to renovate MacDucha Park. Beautification Committee gets their money from the Pumpkin Festival. That is not a city festival. We're working together to renovate that park as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I have several questions I think have to do with just the relationships between the council, between the citizens, and feelings at election time. How would you improve the relations between the council and the citizens? How could you get more people to participate in city council meetings and avoid the emotions and betrayal at election time? Just establishing relationships, that's a tough question. But Rick Kowalczek, if you'd take that one first.
Thank you. So a couple of things. We learned from our Main Street Bridge project that we need to do even more outreach, and we did a ton for that project. Everything you've read about, all the public meetings and all the private meetings, one-on-ones and discussions about that, it still, it wasn't enough. For our library project, we got input from 2,000 residents on our new library. 2,000. We did, we went to where our residents are. Rather than having them come to our meetings, we went into the community at the farmer's market, in front of our stores, and got input. That outreach and that input will allow us to get more information in real time. Secondly, I'm going to be a strong advocate for us conducting periodic meetings, information sessions in Spanish, so that we're engaging our full community. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Prestos, improving relations.
Okay. It seems like over the years, the only time we have a lot of people come to meetings is when we have a problem. And then they all come out, and the problem's already occurred. I think that the meetings have been, I know for a fact the meetings have been open for everyone, every meeting, and I would just encourage that. To have better relations with the community in general, I believe education is really important. I believe if you have, if you have something you want to do, you have a goal, you have to stake that goal clearly and tell them how you're going to do it. And I believe when you're transparent that way, that you have productive dialogue rather than negative dialogue. And that's what, so transparency is a big one. Thank you.
Thank you. Harvey Warbach.
I think one way to get the citizens involved is to have them feel that the city council actually listens to them and doesn't lie to them. And there have been too many instances where the citizens thought that their voice was heard when they were completely ignored. Main Street Bridge is one example. The fact that the city foisted liability for sidewalk and tree maintenance, or tree liability on the citizens without any notice to the citizens. And then when one of the incumbents was advised that this was not a good idea, he said, "No, no, we did advise them." There was a news article in the Half Moon Bay Review. That was enough. So it's that sort of disingenuousness that makes people not trust the city council, and I would certainly change that.
Thank you. Alan Alafano.
I think we already talked about the Main Street Bridge Committee, which is being formed right now. We already have a general plan advisory committee made up of a representative sample of people in our community. The library people have been working really hard, and as you heard, there's hundreds and thousands of people talking about what they want to see with the library. And I think, too, as we get ready to eventually look to what we're going to do with Cabrillo properties, we need to, again, get our citizens involved with that. One of the best ways, I feel, is taking our quarterly newsletter and moving it to monthly. We also need to, at the same time, try to move as many as we can from paper to email and minimize the number of print copies we send out. But let me just make one thing clear. The way we're going to get better relations is not really at council meetings. That's where we're trying to conduct business, but at these citizens committees, study sessions, where we can all take the time and talk. And then when it comes to council, we already have suggestions.
Thank you. Deborah Riddick.
I agree that transparency is critical. You're not really participating if the process isn't transparent. And I think that if the city is transparent, it doesn't need to spend $50,000 a year on a public relations consultant. So I would like to see us make available to citizens the same information that's available to the city council with certain exceptions of, you know, privileged information like personnel issues, real estate transactions, and that sort of thing. So I think we need to, you know, beef up our website, use technology to make communications more interactive, so that it's happening more in real time. And I would recommend that we actually go out into the neighborhoods and occasionally hold meetings there so that we can see people where they live and hear about their individual concerns, because I think participation starts with problems that are very close to people. So you go into the neighborhoods, you work on neighborhood problems, and by developing relationships, hopefully people come to city hall, come to council meetings, ask questions, and become more involved in the larger issues facing our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Penrose.
Yeah, I would echo everything that Deborah Riddick just said. You have to start with what do the citizens say the problem is? What are our neighbors' concerns? And you're not going to know what their concerns are unless you go out there and ask the question, "What are your concerns?" Once you get that information, you can always take it back to council and have council work on it. But it's got to be a transparent process, and it's got to be initiated by the citizens, not by the council.
Thank you. And finally, David Eblovy.
Thank you.
Relations.
I think the way we improve relations between the council and the community, and frankly, between the community ourselves, is both by taking ownership of our communications and of our actions. With my wife, for example, we're going to attend a meeting and bring a hot cup of tea with her. I would make sure it was a closed cup. And if that cup happened to be thrown at somebody, for whatever reason, I would stop the meeting.
Excuse me.
Excuse me. I would stop the meeting and go see how the person was. The next day, I would offer an apology. Actually, I'd offer an apology at that very moment. But then I would go offer an apology the next day. I wouldn't blame it on the political machinations of the guy who had the tea thrown on him.
Thank you.
Sorry, oh, the dialogue, we own the dialogue, we can change the dialogue. We either allow stuff like this to happen and go on, or we stop it. This is really ridiculous, and we're starting to embarrass ourselves as well as everybody else.
Well, I think, I'm not sure if we have time for, I guess, depending on the length of the answers, because we have to give everybody time for their closing statements. I have one, there's several questions about infrastructure and funding, you know, how would you fund things? One specific here is the half-cent sales, amount sales tax has been a tremendous benefit to the community, funding parks, Smithfield, trails, street paving, et cetera. How else would you like to see it used? And, you know, people also asked about infrastructure needs for Half Moon Bay, you know, in the coming future. coming future, so it's probably tied a little bit with sales tax. So, and there's another question regarding, you know, how would you fund things? So maybe you could talk about, you know, the use of that sales tax and what you might perceive coming up that it could be used for. Deborah Penrose, would you like to start with that one?
Yes. As I said in my opening statement, I'm against extension of our emergency sales tax. If you go to San Mateo, you'll spend 9.25% sales tax. Any of the other cities around us, Redwood City, Daly City, Millway, Boeing Game, the sales tax is 9%. Sales taxes are regressive, unless they're dedicated for a specific person, for a specific project, we shouldn't have it. That's it. Thank you.
Rick Kowalczek.
This library now. Measure O enables us to build this library now. Our savings plus Measure O, plus savings from paying off our long-term debt 20 years early, lets us build this library now. Any discussion to change that will delay that. An argument for a parcel tax requires a two-thirds majority vote. Our argument for Measure O to build this library now is 50% of the vote plus one. 2,000 people gave input to this library now. I am the strongest possible advocate for the tourists who visit our community to contribute to building this library now through a modest sales tax. If you spend $1,000, it will cost you five bucks. And in three years, when it sunsets, $1,000 will not cost you anything. This library now, that's my strongest point. Thank you.
Thank you. If you didn't just wait. David Eblovy, any thoughts on the sales tax?
Thank you. Couple of things, misnomers. Tourists and TOT, the TOT tax and sales tax currently account for almost 62% of our annual budget into the general fund. So the idea that tourists and people who come here aren't paying for stuff, I don't understand. I genuinely don't understand. Rick has failed to explain how $2.4 million of revenue is going to pay for $4 million of library down payment, the debt service on $22 million of debt. It's $22 million because it starts out at $10 million, and then you've got a bond measure. They don't talk about the bond measure. Their own PDF lists the bond measure. You have to have lease revenue bonds or general obligation bonds. It doesn't work without that, but they won't address it. It's just, you either like Measure O, and you get into the library, or you don't, and you don't like the library. It's trivial and silly. It's more complex than can be boiled down to, you like Measure O or you don't like the library. It's goofy.
Deborah Roddick, and some thoughts on the half-cent sales tax there too?
I think the fact that it's the highest in Northern California tells us that something is out of whack. If we have to have the highest sales tax in California, it means that our economy is not balanced or diversified enough to support our operations without higher taxes. So I'm against Measure O. The city's financial picture is pretty rosy right now. I think we could ease up on the sales tax. And a better use of our dollar, I think, is investing in our businesses, investing in our infrastructure to make it more attractive for tourists, and help businesses do more transactions. So rather than higher taxes, why not, you know, more business? And we know that sales tax hurts businesses, it drives shoppers to other places, so I think we ought to balance our portfolio, if you will. And I think the library, there are many ways that could be funded, but the public should have a say in the sort of alternatives available to us. How do we want to use our money? If you say, okay, thank you. I'll address it later.
Thank you. Harvey Rorback, thoughts on?
Just as vehemently as Rick Kowalczek tried to explain why Measure O is so great, I think it's awful. Let me explain why. Firstly, sales taxes, as Deborah Penrose said, are regressive. That means they hurt poor people more than people who can, or in the upper classes. That by itself is an argument against sales tax increase. Secondly, Measure J, which this is an extension of, was passed as an emergency measure. The emergency is gone. And the third reason that I really think we should think twice about supporting Measure O is that, as David Eblovy says, it is nuts to think that the income from Measure O could support a library. It just doesn't add up. If, and I am a member of the Friends of the Library, you want to support a library, you need to do it honestly with general obligation bonds.
Thank you. Don Prestos.
Yes, I'm luckily supported, I support Measure O from the beginning, and I support the library as well. Let's look at the library. I see two libraries happening. I see one where it's an idea and a beautiful brochure that everybody got. That's Library One. And I see Library Two. And Library Two, I see concrete, and I see rebar, and I see workers, and I see dust and noise and so on. And what the difference is, Number Two is actually building it, and Number One is just an idea. And we can make, with Measure O, with paying off the bonds, we currently have the Beachwood early, there's a possibility, a good possibility, that we can pay for this if we have Measure O. The reluctance, we'd like to have another financial tool to stop it, and if we can't get the money, it doesn't work.
Thank you. And finally, Alan Alafano. We're still talking about sales tax.
I'm not going last. I love clearing up caca. I'm sorry. Measure K was put on the ballot as an emergency financial measure because there were no candidates running that year. State law says if you don't have candidates running, you can't put a tax measure on unless it's an emergency, financial emergency. K was. J and O are not because we have candidates running. So that's a misstatement. Just walk downtown and talk to the merchants. We've got some of them here tonight. Let me name a few names. Feed and Fuel, It's a Talia, Sprockets, Gourmet Appliance, Toque Blanc, San Benito House, Abo, Mizu, James Ford, Gold Works. They have no problem with J, and they have no problem with O. J will bring in, by the time it's done in June of '16, almost $4 million. The economy is improving. We expect O to bring in closer to $4 to $5 million. From that, we're looking at finishing our streets, improving more trails, youth activities, and a new library. We can afford, we don't need another tax, O will pay for it.
Thank you. I still have a table full and a podium full of questions that we didn't get to, but we, you know, I, when I've been moderator over here before, it's always been the same situation, a pile of questions. So I would encourage you to, you know, make sure you ask, you know, if you see the candidate out on the street, if you have a specific burning question that didn't get asked, you know, nab them and ask it. We'll give them a chance to take a deep breath, and I'll give a little plug. We do have a website called Smart Voter, where you can get more information about the candidates. They've all been invited to put their information up. The League of Women Voters just has done something to it, and it's not quite as nice. It's a little more difficult to navigate. They just did it. But if you do smartvoter.org, you can get to candidates. And since there's so many here, you just have to hit the arrow to see them all, which I learned the other day. So, you know, the League of Women Voters, we're a nonpartisan political organization. If you, you know, if you'd like to do stuff like this, you know, we'd always welcome your joining. So now, it's time for our candidates to give their closing statements. They each have two minutes for a closing statement. And I always, this is, my little grid is strictly random, but we always have them do their closing statements in the reverse order of the opening statements. And they drew for the order of opening statements. And I hope that, you know, there were questions about, you know, how they were prepared for council. I think some of them addressed some of that. You know, to be a member of the council, they've addressed that in their opening statements. And I'm sure you'll hear answers to some of these questions in their closing statements. So now they have two minutes for a closing statement, and the first person is Alan Alafano.
I'm going to go basically back to my opening statement and say again, as voters, you have a very critical choice to make here. Look at people who run on their record, and I am proud to run on what we've accomplished in the last five years. We took our city from the edge of bankruptcy, and we have a very strong, financially viable city. Standard Empowers rated our city extremely strong in a report that we didn't ask for, that they did in rating us. They moved our rating from AA- to AA. A really strong rating for a community that was in serious trouble five years ago. We can't go backwards. And I'll just give you one example. Forget about Beachwood for a minute. And one of the last actions that Ms. Roddick did in 2003 was to purchase a city, a residential lot on Kelly Avenue, 144 Kelly, for $500,000. It was a view corridor for another council member. It sits vacant, okay? That is not the way our council should be operating. So look at the records of the people that are running and be very careful in your choice of how we move forward for the next four years. This is your critical choices. That's why I'm running. I want to keep us on the right track and get all these good things that we've promised you, and somewhere we'll find a movie theater, but especially the library. It's really critical. And like I said, the merchants, the people in town, the people you talk to on Main Street, they're fine with what we're trying to do. They're happy with the way the town's moving. We're spending a lot of money to improve signage and do everything we can to make our town more friendly to tourists and visitors, because that's where we get a lot of money from. So again, let me emphasize, you have a very clear choice when you mark your ballot. It's very important. We keep the city moving forward, not backward.
Thank you, Mr. Alafano. I did ask at the beginning that we wait until the end, and we will all, we'll applaud for all the candidates at the end of the, all of the closing statements. The next closing statement is Deborah Roddick.
I do stand corrected about 144 Kelly. The city council did vote to spend $500,000 to buy a lot that was critical for continuing the railroad avenue right away from the south part, the south-central part of town going north. If we were going to have a green belt where we could build a trail in the future, that lot was critical. So we felt that it was a good investment. We did approach public agencies about getting grants for it, but because it was a single lot, we couldn't find anybody interested. But it was a long-term investment, and I think we're glad we did it. So I just want to leave voters with a few questions. I think you want to be able to answer these when you vote. Who can you trust to listen? Who can you trust to wisely manage our tax money? Who can you trust to manage city staff? Who can you trust to manage change? And where is the vision? What is your vision of Half Moon Bay, and who do you trust to implement that vision? Again, I respectfully request your vote on November 4th. If you want more detail about my vision, you can go to deborahrodick.com. And I would like to say thank you to the chamber and the League of Women Voters for holding the event tonight, and thank you to the public for attending.
Thank you, Deborah Roddick. Next is Rick Kowalczek.
Thank you. I want to thank the League of Women Voters in the chamber and all of you for attending and all of you watching tonight from home. I'm asking for your support on November 4th. My track record speaks for itself. Half Moon Bay is on a positive trend. We turned it around, and we're headed in the right direction. We led a fiscal recovery for this city from near insolvency to financial stability. We utilized our financial surpluses to benefit the community, didn't pour them into esoteric ideas, but into projects that you're seeing starting right now. We initiated, and I initiated, economic development programs like city rebranding, which you'll see in our new signage and for marketing. We pursued and successfully won a legal settlement that enabled us to pay off our long-term debt 20 years early. I helped revive major stalled projects like our new library. Initiated the renovation of MacDucha Park on Main Street in collaboration with the Beautification Committee. Worked with the Boys and Girls Club to collaboratively develop the new skate park concept. Collaboration is important, and we have the relationships in place to keep doing that. Most recently, and most noteworthy, I helped develop the approach and once supported the council, and believe I have the support of the community, to pursue a new library project with no net increase in taxes. If elected, I will help Half Moon Bay continue on its hopeful and optimistic path. Let's do this. One more thing. One more thing. This library now.
Thank you. And I did, we will ask that everybody wait, and we'll thank all the candidates with our applause at the end of their closing statements. Next is Don Prestos.
Thank you. I don't really like politics. The gotcha mentality, you know? I don't like it. I don't like, I'm embarrassed to talk about myself and working at the Pumpkin Festival all those years. I just did it. All I worked with kids at school extra, I just did it. It was just, it was the thing to do. And to say it sounds like I'm Eblovy-ing or something. I'm qualified to vote to be a city council member. I have a Master's in Public Administration with emphasis in finance. I've managed two companies in Silicon Valley. I had my own business still in it for 25 years. And I taught for 15 years. I have good judgment, I'm reasonable, and I'm a good decision-maker. The only reason I'm running is because I care about the city. I am not, I don't have any special interest. I took no money from over the hill. I took no money from any groups. I'm not sure I have enough to pay the bill to the end of the campaign, but so what? It's my campaign. And it's something, I hope you vote for me, because I'm telling you, you can be worse. I am honest.
All right. Excuse me. I think, is that, I think you're, excuse me.
Please vote for me on November 4th. Thank you.
Finally, we want to give everybody a chance here. Next is David Eblovy.
How the heck am I supposed to follow that? So this format was not conducive to a give-and-take between the candidates. That was the last one, unfortunately. But I want to come to this fiscal miracle that we're experiencing, because it's not true. The city booked, there are two pieces of property north of here, Beachwood, which we've all heard of, and Glen Creek. Glen Creek was booked into the city's general fund in 2011 as revenue, when it was donated to the city. $9 million of revenue. The property across the street is worth about a million and a half, maybe $2 million. And how do you book a piece of property, which is a capital asset, as revenue? You can't spend it, we can't use it to buy the library, because if we could, we'd be all set. We'll just sell it for $9 million, buy a library, and we're good. The Beachwood property, we paid $18 million in settlement for, okay? Four years after we paid that, the city decided to book it into, as a capital asset, worth $18 million. Those two properties together total $28 million. In the last four years, the city's net value of all their asset funds has gone from a total of approximately $27 million to $82 million, based on the insurance payout of $13 million and the artificially inflated increase on those two properties. I encourage you to go back and watch the two debates from the previous week, because we get into this in a lot more detail. There was a lot more time to exposit on all of this stuff. But it's a myth. This financial recovery is a myth. Other than that, I don't have a campaign. I don't have a committee. If you see a sign out there, it's because someone believed in me enough to put a sign out there. I'm not sure I'm worth believing in, quite frankly. But if I am, I appreciate every single show of support and encouragement and enthusiasm from people who have seen me make this. from people who have seen me make this town, I believe, a better place. That's my goal. I want to change the dialogue, and I think we're getting there. Who you vote for, doesn't matter to me. Let's just change the dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next is Harvey Rorback.
Hi. I have a PhD in physics. I've worked as an active scientist for over thirty years. I've learned to think analytically and to make good judgments based on facts, not wishes. Um, I would like to bring that expertise to the city council. I, I will not waste your money. Uh, I will not spend fifty thousand dollars a year on PR consultants who make these fancy drawings that don't really represent reality. Uh, I would not have our legal services, twenty-seven thousand dollars last month. Uh, Main Street Bridge, uh, contract, which you think it would be over by now, uh, until it's decided what to do, that's thirteen hundred dollars last month alone. So I would be much more fiscally conservative. I understand it's your money. I would spend your money on infrastructure, I would spend your money on maintenance. Those are important things. Um, uh, so, uh, I think that it's really important to, uh, be, uh, to, to match our desires for facilities and programs with our real budget. I'll listen to your concerns, and I'll take them seriously. I will also obey our laws, and, uh, including the Coastal Act, which I don't think the, uh, current council takes very seriously. I don't think that our council is, uh, fiscally conservative, I don't think they, uh, really listen to you, and I don't think that they, in all cases, obey our Coastal Act. So I will do all these things. On November fourth, I ask for your vote, if you believe in me. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, our last closing statement is from Deborah Penrose.
Yeah, I think that, that the biggest problem that our city has is the problem of polarization. We have at least two camps in our city. We have the, the people that want to develop the city, and we have the people that want to conserve this city. I, I don't think either of those two ideas is exclusive, mutually exclusive. I think I have the endorsement of the Democratic Club, I have the support of the Sierra Club. I have the endorsement of the San Mateo County Realtor Association. And it's because I believe in developing our city. I believe in developing small business in our city. I believe in conserving and taking care of our open space. I don't think my lack of political experience is a deficit. In fact, I think the fact that I haven't had experience as a politician might even be an asset. I bring a fresh perspective to the problem. I'm willing to listen, and that's the biggest, biggest asset I've got, is that I know how to listen, and I know how to be inclusive. The only way we're going to grow as a city and prosper as a city is if we have all the citizens' voices heard, and that includes the thirty-two or thirty-three percent of the Latino community that has not been included so far. So I'd ask for your vote, because I'll be a voice of reason, I'll use sound judgment, and I will be inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now, I'd like to say thank you to the, the chamber for, uh, doing this, and I especially want to thank the candidates for coming and, and for participating tonight. I think it takes, you know, it takes a lot of courage to get out there and, and run for office, and, uh, so, you know, and you've got quite an array here, so, uh, now join me in, in applauding and thanking them for coming. Thank you all for coming. Thank Jackie Jacobberger and the League of Women Voters for moderating it. Thank you Pacific Coast TV for being our partner and putting this on. And especially, I thank all of the candidates for coming and allowing the public to listen to your, um, to your thoughts and, and what you'd like to do for the city. One last thing, please. Even though I didn't burn napkins, we have a lot of cookies over there, and if I take them back, my staff will kill me tomorrow night. So we have children at home, and we have wives and husbands that love cookies, so just go fill your pockets in your pocketbooks and take the cookies away, so I don't have to leave them back in my car. Thank you, everybody, for coming out.